...afternoon. I'm Bill Lacy, the director of the institute. We're delighted that you could join all of us today. Some key upcoming programs at the institute are on the back of our program that you can take a look at. Tonight, following this town hall, following this town hall, conserve KU's From Blue to Green program will feature a distinguished panel in the Simons Media Room, considering the Pickens Plan for Lawrence and Kansas, and you're all invited. That'll be in the Simons Media Room, which is the room back into the right. After a brief news conference immediately after the program, Mr. Pickens will be signing copies of his book, The First Billion is the Hardest, in our lobby. All proceeds from the sale of the book go to wounded veterans at Brooke Army Medical Hospital in San Antonio. So we would ask you to pick up a copy of the book, take the opportunity to have Mr. Pickens sign it for you, and that'll be right after the conclusion of the program and a very brief news conference. Let me also tell you that today we have joining us on, by closed-circuit television, three community colleges with audiences in different parts of Kansas. We're very happy to have Hutchinson Community College, Colby Community College, and Seaword Community College joining us today. Today's ground rules: Please turn off your cell phones now, right now, please. Thank you. After Mr. Pickens' presentation, we'll have a Q&amp;A session. If you would like to ask a question, please raise your hand, and a student will bring a mic to you. If you're watching in the Simons Media Room and have a question, come out to the American flag stained glass window, and we will have a microphone back there so that you can ask questions from back there. And always, as our process is at the Dole Institute, please do ask a question. No filibustering and no speeches. We have a special guest I'd like to recognize today who is able to join Mr. Pickens, Mrs. Madeline Pickens. Mrs. Pickens? Just wave to everybody. Thank you for being with us today at the Dole Institute. Now, Mr. Pickens actually toured the Dole Institute on February 27, 2005, when he was on campus for a basketball game between his beloved Oklahoma State Cowboys and our beloved Jayhawks. I will not speak to the outcome of that game, but I can assure you that the tour here at the Dole Institute was the highlight of his day. The Dole Institute has been widely recognized for our programming, but it's rare that we get such an extraordinary lineup in one afternoon. Our guests, plus the man whose name appears on this building, plus a sitting U.S. Senator. Sam Brownback has served as a Bob Dole intern, as KU student body president, as a White House fellow, as Kansas Secretary of Agriculture, agriculture, and a congressman. He was elected to U.S. Senate in 1996, and very appropriately holds the seat of the man that he will introduce. The New York Times has called him "one of the most conservative, religious, fascinating, in many ways admirable politicians in America today." Please welcome to the Dole Institute of Politics Senator Sam Brownback. Senator?
Thank you very much. You said student vice president at KU, it was K-State. I don't want to get any apples or bricks anywhere, but, boy, what a great day, and what an exciting day, and what a great opportunity to talk about a key issue facing America, and to recognize, and that one of the great entrepreneurs and business leaders in America here in T. Boone Pickens. He knows that this is the home of KU and Bill Self, and you can't talk to Bill Self while you're here. We already discussed that inside. We won that one last year. Oh, by the way, I understand KU is preseason number one for next year's basketball from ratings. So that's great news to have as well. This is such an enormous topic, it's an important topic, and we need to pull the plan together to execute it, and it's important that we knew it. And Kansas can be right in the center of having and being a renewable America. I want to see Kansas be a state of renewables, and where we're not only known for our wheat and airplanes and basketball, but also for our wind energy, our biodiesel, ethanol, hydrogen-powered locomotives. We can do this. This can be a key part of our future. I drove into the campus today in a soybean diesel-powered pickup truck. It's 20% biodiesel. I've got here, and I thought I'd put it on, but I don't think it matches probably the decor, a shirt that the Soybean Association gave me that's made out of soybeans. Now, yeah, all right, that's right. We need to have more of these. Now, I'm told that the earlier models of these first came out in the '30s, and they needed some work because they were okay when you wore them, but if they got wet, they started to smell like wet grain. So you couldn't sweat, and these don't do that. But my point in saying this is that we can do this, and we can do it in America, and we can do it in Kansas, and it's important that we do it in Kansas. We have the first cellulosic ethanol plant, one of the first four is going up in Kansas. We've got, and this will roll off the line here in about a month, out of Topeka, Kansas, will be the first hydrogen-powered fuel cell locomotive made in the world. Will be rolling out of BNSF and the Army out of Topeka, Kansas. Hydrogen fuel cell train locomotive coming out of here. We've been building locomotive units in Topeka for a long time. We need to have the next wave of them coming out of it. One of the key pieces to this is wind power generation, a renewable resource without cost, without impact generally, in the environment overall, and we can be the Saudi Arabia of wind. And I believe we have the full capacity to be able to be that, and that that can be a key part of what our future is about. One of the key problems we're going to face, and you'll hear about that during the discussion today, is getting the wind to market. We've got to be able to get the transmission lines to be able to move it to market, and that's going to be critical for us, and that's one of the things that's up in front of the Senate now. At the root of all of this is our need to get off of foreign oil. We have too much dependency that makes us too insecure, that's too expensive for us in that dependency on foreign oil. And harvesting the wind in Kansas and getting it to markets where it's needed around the country is critical. That's why I'm delighted to have the Pickens Plan be presented here today, and part of that, I think, will be moving forward in the United States Congress as we get an energy plan pulled together that we can execute and be a part of. I'm in the seat that was previously occupied by Senator Bob Dole. It's been a singular honor for me to be in that seat and to recognize him. And before Boone Pickens speaks, I'm going to ask Senator Dole to come up, make comments. He is a legend. He is the Michael Jordan of legislating, if I can use a basketball analogy, and he's a friend. And I hope you give just a rousing welcome to the author of this institute, Bob Dole.
Well, it's an honor for me to just still be around. And I find as I get a little older, things get a little harder, but, you know, if you come from this part of the country, you can deal with it. And Boone and I are sort of compatriots in that area. And a lot of the reason for the wind in this part of the country is the fact that I was in the Congress for 37 and a half years, so I get a lot of credit for stirring up a lot of this stuff on the Senate floor and on the House floor. But this, to me, is a great opportunity for Kansas, and Sam Brownback is working his tail off to try to do the right thing, because as he said, as he closed his statement there, "we're just importing too much foreign oil." And they were making that same argument back in 1960s, when I first went to the Senate, in '62 and '64 and '66, we're importing too much oil. Then it was 30, 40%, yeah, and Boone's going to give you particulars on how much, but it's just grown and grown and grown. And we always talked about, "Well, let's do something about it," but we never did anything about it. That happens sometimes in Congress, where you talk a lot about doing something about it, but you never get around to doing anything about it. Well, T. Boone Pickens is not that kind of person. He's not going to sit around and talk about it. In fact, I told him the other day, I saw his schedule, I thought he was running for first-term member of Congress. I mean, he was everywhere, and he's been in Arkansas and New York and here today and going on to Texas tonight, so he's a hard worker. But before I did, I want to say something about my good friend, Sam Brownback, but I wanted to introduce a friend of mine and wish her a happy birthday, Scotty Lingelback. Where's Scotty? Scotty, stand up. She's much younger than I am, or I would give her...
That's 18, 7. Oh, my God, is she long?
Uh-oh. Well, they told me not to mention your age, since you did. But she's a great resource for the Dole Institute, and we thank you very much and appreciate all of your help. I'd say one word about the institute. When this happened, we insisted, first of all, that we'd get at least half the money from private sources. First, we said all the money from private sources, and my good friend, Pat Roberts, didn't think that was doable, so we did half of it, and many people in this audience have contributed year after year, and it's been what we said it would be. It's sort of a laboratory for ideas and for bipartisanship, for nonpartisanship. It's not a Republican institute or Democratic institute. In fact, I get complaints from Republicans all the time, "When are you going to invite a Republican speaker to come to the Dole Institute?" So it's what it's supposed to be. And I believe the young people on the campus and others who do research have learned a great deal, and we have a great staff, and Bill Lacy does a good job, and we're very, you know, very pleased that he's here, and I think it is an asset to the campus, and we want to keep it that way and keep our word to the people. When we first dedicated it, President Carter, as you may recall, came all the way from Georgia on a Saturday afternoon to dedicate it. There were 35 Medal of Honor winners here for the dedication, and Tom Brokaw was a master of ceremonies, so it's sort of a, you know, nonpartisan, bipartisan, whatever. But Sam Brownback, as I said, has been the leader, and he's been working very closely with Boone Pickens. But it's not just on the energy area that Sam has been so effective for the state of Kansas, it's pretty much across the board. And I can remember Sam, when he used to come to Washington in his Future Farmers jacket, and I was in the Senate, and I would escort Sam and the other Future Farmers who came around the Capitol, and that's his background, and he'd been here all his life, he knows this state, and he understands this state. Before I came out here, I said, "Sam, this is your party and Boone's event. Are you sure it's okay if I come?" And he gave me consent to come, and I appreciate it very much. I don't get invited out very much anymore. Now, I want to say just one word about Boone Pickens. I said earlier, I think he spent more time in Kansas than I did. You know, he's been a taxpayer in this state for, I don't know how many, he'll tell you, 40, 50, 60 years, but he can tell you by acquiring the Yugaton Production Company at Garden City, Kansas in 1969, which owned a substantial portion of the Yugaton field in southwestern Kansas, which is the biggest field there was. That's where sort of Boone really got his start. And there's no question that his success started in the great state of Kansas, and for that, we're grateful, and I know Boone is, too. He's still the most listened-to voice when it comes to oil and gas in the country. What's it going to do? What's going to happen down the road? What do you think, the price in six months? He's on all the talk shows, and when he goes on, you go on some of these talk shows, he was on the Hannity Show last week, and Hannity didn't want to talk about the Pickens Plan. He wanted to talk about something critical of the President or critical of somebody else, but not with Boone. You don't do that. He came there to talk about the Pickens Plan. And whatever question he got from John Hannity, he got an answer about energy and how much we're importing and how important it was. And I think it made a much better program than kicking somebody in politics around. I mean, you know, it's a lot of fun for 30, 40 years, but then you would move on to something else. But, and if I'd have stayed on message, the way Boone stays on message, we might be in the presidential library today instead. But I like to ramble around a little, so I didn't... Boone has a product that he knows how to sell, and he's going to tell you about one minute here. In fact, I think Boone announced my delegates from Texas in 1996. Well, I think he's a lot like this spirit, as I said earlier, this institute. You know, we're reaching out, we're trying to learn, we're trying to be creative. We want people to know more about what's going to happen in the future. And Boone understands how important it is, particularly to the younger people in this audience, and there are many of them, about the role that energy will play, or the role that if we don't have energy, it will play in the future. And the biggest, I think, the thing that I like about, and I watch Boone around the Capitol, this is not a partisan thing to Boone Pickens. He doesn't make it a partisan thing. He doesn't single out one source of energy. He'll talk to you about nuclear, he'll talk to you about wind, he'll talk to you about natural gas, whatever it is. He's kept it very general, so he's picked up a lot of support across the board, Democrats and Republicans, because he hasn't made it a political issue. It shouldn't be a political issue. We're talking about the future of our country and the future jobs for our children and many in this audience. So he firmly believes in what he's doing. He wants to build a stronger country, and he's doing it with his own money. He didn't get a bailout or any money from the federal government to go out and try to sell this Pickens Plan. This is the T. Boone Pickens Plan, and if you want to read more about it, I just happened to bring a copy of his book, T. Boone Pickens. There's going to be a signing ceremony after a while, but it's a great book and tells you how one person will, can make a difference. So Boone, we're honored that you're here. I know this is your second visit to the institute. We welcome you to the state of Kansas, and please come up.
Bob, thanks. Bob, thank you. I've got two or three things here. I'd like to run down my list, get them out of the way, and then we'll get down to business. But book, the book, The First Billion is the Hardest, and that book came out last September. We made the bestseller list for a few weeks and faded, but we're maybe come back again. Now, the proceeds, anything, any of you that buy a book today, those go to Brooke Army Medical in San Antonio and to Fisher House, so I don't get any proceeds off of that. And so you know when you're doing that, it helps our service people. The second, second, that I go back to the 1996 race, whether we want to talk about that or not, Bob, I don't know, but I do. I'd like to say something about it, because it was one of the highlights in my life when I was at the Republican Convention at San Diego, 1996, when I stood up for Texas and said, "We cast all our votes for Senator Dole from Kansas for President of the United States." And that was a big day for Boone, and it was, I still remember it very well. Sam Brownback, Sam and I are working hard on an energy plan for America, and we, every time we get together, we get a little further into the strategy of it. But I can promise you, this year, I don't know whether Sam can or not, but I can promise you, we're going to have an energy plan for this country. We've gone 40 years with no plan, and so now we're getting ready to come up on a time when we have a plan. I want to talk a little more about that, but I want to recognize Dan Jacobson, President of AT&amp;T Kansas. Is Dan here? Dan, thanks. Let me tell you why I'm recognizing Dan. Dan has helped, his company has, and has shown great leadership. And I had a talk, had a visit with Randall Stevenson, CEO of AT&amp;T in Dallas, and we talked about that the country needed an energy plan, and I said, "What we need on energy is leadership. We need it desperately." And he said, "In what way?" I said, "You need to have the big companies here, the leaders in corporate America, come forth and say, 'We're going to get on our own resources in this country, and we're going to get off of foreign oil.'" And Randall said, "Okay, how do you see that happening?" And I said, "I'd like for AT&amp;T to announce that they are going to do a large number of their vehicles on natural gas or hybrids, but what I want is American." And when Bob said that, said, "I'm for nuclear, I'm for drilling, I'm for natural gas, I'm for ethanol, I'm for anything that's American is what I'm after, and I want it replacing foreign oil." And I'll talk on in a minute about that. But anyway, AT&amp;T stepped up as a leader for us on that. A couple of things, I've got some small type here, but on my Pickens Plan, there are 34,870 Pickens Plan members in the state of Kansas that have signed up with me on that. Could I have a show of hands of you that know something about the Pickens Plan? It was higher in Oklahoma. Okay. We had 4,558,000 people sign up for the Pickens Plan virtual march, which was April 1 through 3, and we put over a million emails, faxes, and calls into Washington during those three days. So we're pretty well-known, I mean, as to what we're up to and what we want, which is an energy plan. Now, further, Governor Sebagihas was one of the, was, I think, my first governor that signed with me on the Pickens Plan, and that was at Topeka. We did the first town hall meeting at Topeka back in September, and, wrong, it was in July. But we did it out there, and we could not believe we had, we were prepared to receive 600 people there, and we had 600 indoors and 400 outside. So I knew that some of the concerns I had about energy for America and what Americans thought about it was coming through very clearly to me when we asked the people to come, and we had a great meeting. One last point, Congressman Dennis Moore from Kansas has also signed up with me on the Pickens Plan, and I don't have to stand back here, do I? I don't. Oh, good deal. Water, and I can sit down. But, okay, let me go into my mission, and I see this as a mission for me. How did I get the mission? It was many, many years in the business prepared me for the mission, and as it unfolded, I started to become very sensitive to what politicians said about energy. And I go back to 1970, and Richard Nixon said, "At the end of the decade, we will not be importing any more oil in the United States." At that point, we were importing 24%. At the end of the decade, we were importing 28%. Nobody ever said to him, "Mr. President, you know, you told us that we weren't going to be importing any more oil by the end of the decade." Nobody ever asked the question. And I wonder, do they forget, or is it, we just, that it's not mentioned? So from that point forward, everybody that ran, Democrat or Republican, would say, "Elect me, and we will be energy independent." And they would be elected, and nobody ever said, "How are you coming on energy independent?" Nobody ever asked. As we went forward from 28% at the end of the '70s, we were now 51% by the time we got to the Gulf War, and I was making speeches which, you know, people would say, "It's a good speech, and I agree with you," but nothing happened. I'd say, "We can't go any further. We're going too far. We're becoming dependent on oil from people that hate us." And everybody said, "Well, that sounds good. I think you're right. I think all this is true." But never did we pick up any traction, no momentum, nothing happened. But the reason it didn't happen is because we had cheap oil. And so here we became addicted to cheap oil. Today, I was, I've been working earlier in New York today, and I just came into New York, and there, somebody said, "It's just like dope, isn't it?" I said, "Pretty much like dope. I mean, we got it cheap, and we continue to use more and more and more of it." So we get down to this point in 19, what is this year? '09. 2009, we're importing almost 70% of our oil. 57% of the 70% actually comes from Venezuela, really nice guys there. We get a million barrels a day from them. We get Mideast, of course, and we have some friends, maybe, but we have some people there that really hate us, and from Africa, and that's kind of falls in the same category. So all of this, now, we're sitting here very, very vulnerable in this country, and our security is very much at risk because of the dependency on foreign oil. Okay, the problem's been pretty well analyzed at this point, I think, that I could add some other things and maybe where else we'd go, but now, what's the solution? How do we get off of it? We can, but the only way you can get off of it is to get on our resources. There's no other way. Now, somebody said, "Well, you can conserve." Okay, good, I like that. Let's conserve, use less oil, but we're still going to be using a lot of oil. Now, oh, I do want to make a point here, that there's, every day, the production in the world is about 85 million barrels a day, 85 million. I do not see that increasing. Now, we're dealing with an 8% decline curve every year. So 8% times 85 is about 7 million barrels. So you're going to have to replace 7 million to get back to 85 every year. Very, very hard to do. So what's going to happen is about 2012, about get it, and you're at that 85, you can't replace it, and so it starts to fade. As it goes off, and now you're going down, and demand is rising around the world, the price will go straight up. Now, you got a preview of that last year. So when we launched on July the 8th, '08, the price gasoline in Washington that day was $4.11, okay? And people were really concerned, and they were screaming about it and everything else. And we did a lot of polling and focus group work and spent a lot of money. I spent $58 million to tell this story, and I didn't raise a dime of it. I mean, it was all me. But I was a lot richer back then than I am now. This year's budget was 58 also. I said, "Oh, 58 at one time is enough. We've got to cut that thing down for the second year." But we've got to get this job done. The mission is very clear, it's what I have to accomplish, and it ended up, a guy on July 8th, 2008, 80 years old, comes up with a plan. Now, that's a little strange. I mean, where, it just doesn't, somehow doesn't fit. What, he didn't come up with a plan? Would we have a plan? I'm not so sure you would. I'm not so sure you would have had a plan. My father, I've got to tell you the story, but when I went to school, you all know Oklahoma State, Bill Self and I both went to school there. But at Oklahoma State, I was being initiated in the fraternity. I was SAE, and my father was an SAE at Tennessee, and he was a much better fraternity man than I was, and so he wanted to pin me with his badge when I was initiated. And I wanted him to, of course, too, but anyway, he came over to Stillwater for the ceremony, and he pinned me with the badge, and we hugged each other and everything. That was the day that my father became my brother. I always thought that was funny, and nobody ever laughed. But we were now brothers in the bond, and we, you know, had a nice hug and everything, and everybody thought it was a nice ceremony, father, son, you know. So then it was over with, and he was going to leave and go home. So we walked out on the front lawn, and he said, "Son, I want to get serious with you about something." He said, "Your mother and I." Well, he didn't need to say "serious," he just needed to mention "your mother and I." That's serious, because she was the one that kind of was the disciplinarian in the whole operation. I'm an only child, by the way, so I got a lot of attention, but she provided kind of the tough stuff. But they were in agreement, and this is what they were in agreement on. He said, "We have a plan for your graduation, but we don't think you're on the same plan we are." There's no argument there. And so I said, "Okay." And he said, "You're going to be finished June 1st, 1951." And I was kind of thinking, "I may be finished right now, the way this, the way things were going." I'd entered in pre-veterinary medicine, and that didn't seem to be the life for me. And then I was in business, and my dad really didn't like business, and so he said... he said, "So, son," he said, "I wanna explain to you." Said, "A fool with a plan can be a genius with no plan." And he said, "Your mother and I are concerned that we have a son that is a fool with no plan." And I, there was nothing he had said up to that point that I could respond to, other than kinda shake my head and all. So, he said, "We have a plan. You better get on our plan and get out of school, June 1st, 1951." Believe it or not, I did it. I had to carry two 18s and 19s and do a summer, but I got out, June 1st, 1951. The point of the story is, we have no energy plan. We look like fools. We look like fools without a plan. And let me tell you, around the world, I think our credibility suffers every day because, for instance, the Minister of Energy for Denmark wanted to get in touch with me and, and all, and we finally got together, and she came in from Copenhagen, and, and we met at the Hayo Adams Hotel, and this was a month ago. And we talked, she said, "I've been watching what you're doing, and I can't, I can't figure out what is it you are doing." And I said, "Well, I'm trying to get off of foreign oil, is what I'm working on." She said, "Well, look at what we've done in Denmark. We're off foreign oil." And I said, "Really?" She said, "Yeah." She said, "We don't import any more oil from the Mideast." I said, "How did that come about?" She said, "Well, we got in and used our own resources." So, I said, "Well, that's what I'm trying to do." She said, "Well, that's what it looked like, but I didn't know whether you were doing any good or none." And she said that, and then proceeded to tell me, you know, "You can do this, this, and, and all." And, and I said, "I'm, I'm covering every base that you've mentioned that, but we have to get on our own resources." So, I then put together the Pickens Plan. Now, the mission unfolds, and I go, "I'm gonna make this the number-one issue in the presidential campaign last year." And so, we elevated it. Well, you pour enough money in there, you know, you can get some attention. I mean, people say, "God, that guy keeps showing up on air. Maybe I better listen to him." Or if they've listened to me, he said, "Change the station." You know, but nonetheless, they, you start to kinda wonder, "What is this guy up to, and whether it makes sense or not?" Well, as it proceeded, it apparently did make sense. And our poll that we ran six months ago, we picked up 71% knew what the plan was. And so, we knew we were making some penetration with the idea. In September, after we'd been running up for about over a month, well, both McCain and Obama said they wanted to talk to me about energy. So, I met with them four days apart. McCain, I met with in Aspen, and met with Obama four days later in Reno. And both meetings went just about the same length of time. McCain had, he and Lindsey Graham are in there, and then, over with Obama, he and David Axelrod were there. And so, there were just, I had one person with me, and so, there were four of us there. And I made the total presentation for my side of the issue. And it's kinda interesting, because I said to both of them, I said, "Look, that, the presentation I wanna make to you," I said, "is if you were the Commander in Chief, and that I," well, I didn't say that first. I said, "That I'm a general coming to you with a problem, and I have a solution for it." And I said, "And you're the Commander in Chief." And both of them had the same look on their face when I said it. They smiled. It was, you know, it's just, it was like, I go, "I've already in," you know. And so, anyway, the, but McCain said, when we shook hands, he said, "You've accomplished what you set out to do." And I said, "What, which was what?" He said, "That it's the number-one issue in this campaign. I have more questions asked me about energy than any other thing." So, I felt good when he told me that. The, no use telling you what McCain said, because he isn't around anymore. But Obama was interesting, because he asked if he could take notes, which I thought, "That was nice. Is that respectful, or is he, does he really wanna take notes?" He took notes when I was talking all the way through. And he said, "Is there anything that I say in my remarks about energy that makes you uncomfortable?" And I said, "Yeah, I said one thing. I said, 'You are, are big on 1 million plug-in hybrids that you're gonna have in 10 years.'" And, you know, when somebody kinda challenges you, you'll, you'll sit up like this, and you know, and he did, and he said, "Let me tell you something, Mr. Pickens. I'm gonna have 1 million plug-in hybrids in 10 years." And I said, "Okay. Look out that window in that parking lot out there." He said, "Yeah." I said, "There's a million cars out there." He said, "Yeah." I said, "It'd look big, wouldn't it?" He said, "Yeah, it'd look like a lot of cars out there." I said, "Now, step back. You're President of the United States, and look at America. In America, there are 250 million vehicles in America. And in 10 years, you're gonna have 1 million plug-in hybrids?" Pause, and he said, "Not very many, is it?" I said, "You're not grasping the size of the problem, is what it is. We're turning out another 13 million vehicles a year. 1 million's nothing." And so, he listened to that, and he never said it again, which I thought was pretty good. And he also said, when he took, had the nomination, he said, "When I," he said, "In 10 years, we will not be importing any oil from the Mideast." I believe that if somebody says that, that they have a plan. I think he has a plan. Now, the way it's unfolded, the first part of my plan was, is we're going with renewables. We got the wind, the solar, and we have to have a smart grid. Well, all of that's in the stimulus package. Now, you're over to how you're gonna reduce the oil, because the only thing we have in America, one resource, is natural gas. It's the only thing that we have that can reduce the dependency on foreign oil. Think, think with me. That's the only thing we've got. Both Obama and McCain said to me, "We would like to use a battery." I said, "Fine, but a battery won't move an 18-wheeler." Again, they had the same look on their face. "It won't." They didn't know. They didn't know you could move, the only thing you're gonna move an 18-wheeler with is diesel or with natural gas. You can't do it with ethanol, we know that. Biofuels are out on the heavy duty, good on the light duty. And so, as it, as it unfolded, and now, we're over to the energy bill, and, and Senator Brownback is, is big in this deal. And, and what I believe that we have to do is to have a very clean bill, not connected to climate, not connected to, to cap and trade, but take it through there so we can get on our own resources as fast as we can. It's that simple. It isn't hard to understand. So, we need to get an energy bill where we are going to move natural gas to heavy duty, do the light duty with a battery. That's fine with me, I don't care. I want it to be American, is what I'm after. I want to get off of foreign oil. This is, and I'm 80 years old, so I'm in a rush. I want, well, I mean, you know, I mean, you have to be. And, and right now, the iron is hot. We know that. We know that Congress is ready for an energy bill. We know we gotta come with something. And I think we're gonna get it. I think both the Democrats and the Republicans want this. So, we've got the problem pretty well analyzed. I don't get anybody that will challenge me. Oh, every once in a while. But if anybody's gonna get up today on questions and challenge me, don't get up and say you have, you don't like my plan, unless you have a plan. But you can't just say you don't like mine, and that's it. No, because if you don't like my plan, your plan is foreign oil, because that's exactly what you're gonna get. You're gonna either have a plan for domestic resources, or you're gonna have foreign oil. That's, that's it. It's either up or down. So, it, it makes an argument that is extremely difficult to say, "I don't like your plan." So, what's gonna happen in the future, that, sure, we're tracking everybody, we're tracking Congress, that we're watching very closely, those that don't have a plan are gonna be tagged at some point as being for foreign oil, and they are not gonna like that. That's gonna be a disaster case for an elected incumbent that is not, does not have a plan for getting off of foreign oil. Okay, now, I've brought it down, and I'm, I'm ready to take questions if, so let's, let's go to questions. Yes?
Mr. Pickens, I greatly admire the energy with which you put your plan forth, and I, I really, I admire the fact that you've got the, you've got the resources to get your plan out in front. Now, I also have another friend, Harry A. Brown, you've heard of him, I'm pretty sure.
Harry Brown?
In, in Phoenix. He has the Phoenix Project, but he doesn't have the funding you have, and so, I even tried to get him to-
We're gonna see John Spurling out there tomorrow.
Pardon me?
We're gonna see John Spurling in Phoenix tomorrow.
Well, I'm thinking of Harry A. Brown. His plan is to use the windmills you're talking about, but to turn the energy into hydrogen right then and there. And I, I thought, "Well, why not combine the two? We know how grids break down, and they do."
Okay.
Can you have an automatic system that would start to immediately turn that energy-
I know the question, I'm ready.
Into hydrogen?
All right. The hydrogen is very expensive, and so, we're not ready to receive hydrogen into vehicles. We do not have the vehicles to do it. So, we don't, can you hear me okay?
Not quite.
Okay, but we, we don't, we do not have the vehicles to run on hydrogen. So, it's the, actually, the power that we're gonna generate with the windmills are, it's, we're gonna have to subsidize it. There's no question we do. The wind is priced off the margin. The margin is natural gas. So, you're going to have to have $8 natural gas to make the, the wind work, is, is kinda the way it is. But we're getting on our own resources. So, we need to develop. These things are gonna develop as we go. We will be much more efficient five years from now than we are today. But if, as you go forward, the natural gas, all it does is bridge you to where you wanna go. It's gonna bridge you about 20 years, and you're gonna have the technology at that point that we're gonna, the next transportation fuel that we're gonna have will either be the battery, or it'll be the fuel cell, is the way it's gonna work. But you have to have the bridge, which is natural. Believe it or not, one of my new friends, this surprised Bob when I say this, Al Gore. Now, don't laugh, just a second. Al's, Al is big on climate. Climate's on page two for me. Page one is security for America and our, our economy. That's on page one. But it so happens, there's some things that are, are parallel on climate and getting energy secure in this country. And so, and Al said the other day in a summit meeting in Washington, where we had Pelosi and, and Harry Reid, and had 28 people there, had President Clinton was there, and, and Gore was there. But Gore said, "I agree with Boone Pickens on this. We have to use the natural gas on the heavy duty to bridge us to the battery in the future." So, that's gonna happen. You're not ready to take wind to hydrogen. Okay, next question.
We have a question in the middle.
Have you found a way to motivate the companies who own the actual electric grid to upgrade that grid, or are they just to upgrade based on doing the right thing?
Well, what's gonna happen, and that was, there's been a lot of work done on this, but the, the question on the grid that is the problem is the siding of the right-of-way. And so, you're gonna, that's got to be done. And I, I'm supposing you're, it's gonna be, as this thing unfolds, you're gonna, you're gonna hear a lot of conversation about Eisenhower and the interstate highway, and how that went down with the American people. Of course, the interstate highways were built by the federal government. But here, they can get the, get those right-of-ways. Kind of an interesting sidelight to that, I was on a program this morning with Ted Turner, and Ted is, you know, he's, he's very green, and he, he's, he kinda falls over the same side as Al Gore does on it. But, but Turner is convinced that if we do have a green economy, we will have the best economy we've ever had. I see that more, is we have a green economy, we are on our own resources, and that will be the best that we've, that economy we've ever had. Remember, when oil is selling for $140 a barrel, that you're paying out $700 billion a year for oil, and boy, that money's gone. So, today, at 40, at $50 a barrel, you're, you're about $350 billion a year is what you have going out of the country. But if you don't have an energy plan, and you haven't had for 40 years, go forward for 10 years and look at that. Well, what are we looking at, 2019? At that point, you'll be importing 75% of your oil, and you'll be paying $300 a barrel for it. So, at that point, you're now paying out $2 trillion a year for foreign oil. Now, that solves two problems. The two problems it does solve is health care and education, because you're not gonna have any money to address either one of those. You spend it all on the oil. Okay, that's, that's a harsh story, if that happened. We can't let that happen. Now, you say, "Well, how do you know it's $300 a barrel?" Go back five years. The revenues for OPEC were $250 billion five years ago. In 2008, their revenues were $1,250 billion. Now, they didn't all come from us, because they sell oil to a lot of different, but $1,250 billion were their revenues last year. You go forward 10 years, I promise you, you'll be at $300 oil. Okay, next question. I'll let, somebody, somebody pick on-
There's a question in the back of the room.
Okay, good.
Mr. Pickens, does your plan include taking the Alaskan oil from the pipeline and selling it in the U.S. rather than just to Asian countries?
Give me that question. Did you, did you hear? Give it, I didn't hear.
Does your, does your plan include taking the oil from the Alaskan pipeline and using it in the U.S. rather than selling it to Asian countries?
No. They, remember that Alaska, that's, it's a myth that people believe that there are huge reserves in Alaska that are gonna solve our problem. Out of the 85 million barrels that's produced every day, we are using 21 million barrels of that. 21 million. That's 25% of the, of the total, with only 4% of the population. 12 million barrels we are importing. Of the 21 million that we use, we import about 12 million barrels. So, Alaska is not a solution for us. It will help us, and we have no simple solution for one thing to solve the problem. So, what do we do in Alaska? Go ahead and drill and water, that's fine with me. But remember, the pipeline in Alaska, from Dead Horse down to Valdez, is only 2 million barrels a day, and that's all it'll ever be. That's all it'll ever be. Go back, we're importing 12 million barrels. So, if we increase the production in Alaska, what could we get? Right now, that pipeline has depleted down to 700,000 barrels a day. So, you can add 1,300,000 barrels to it, and that's all you can do. Doesn't make any difference how much oil you find up there, but it will last a long time, which is good. Maybe you can fill up the 2 million barrels a day for 10, 20 years, I don't know. But that's all you can count on out of Alaska. So, Alaska, that crude comes down and goes into California, is where that crude is processed. So, Alaska is not the solution, but any oil we find anywhere in the United States will help. Question?
We have a question right here.
Does coal play a part in your plan?
Does what?
Coal.
Coal. Anything that's American, I'm for. I'm for, I'm for coal, yes. I think you're gonna have to clean it up, or you're not gonna get it past the, the problems that we have. A lot of people, as you know, I know your project out here at Holcomb and all, that that was a struggle in the state, and some wanted it, some didn't want it. But the thing about it is, I probably would've been for it, because it creates a transmission to Colorado, and you can put the wind on the grid and get on, get on some of that transmission. So, transmission, I wanna go back to, I said about Ted Turner, we were on this CNN deal, which doesn't come out for two weeks or something, but it was questions and answers to each other. And I said, "Ted, let me tell you." I said, "You own 2 million acres of surface in the United States. You are the largest landowner in America." I said, "What would you do if they said, 'By golly, we're gonna have to site a, a transmission line across your property.'" He said, "I'd be glad to have it." I mean, like that, he didn't even think. He said, "What would you do? You have a ranch, 68,000 acres." I mean, I'm not even in his league. 2, 2,068. But 68's not bad, but, but 68, I said, I'd answer the question the same way. I said, "I was asked that question the other day. I said, 'Let her come.'" I said, "If it, if it's gonna help the situation in America on, on transmission, if it comes across me, I'll be glad to have it. That's it." I want this guy here from Michigan to add, he's gonna, has a question, "What in the hell are you doing here with a Michigan shirt on?" Okay, get, let him, what's the question? I'll, I'll repeat it.
Yeah, my question was about the cap of the transmission.
Yeah, my question was, without some type of cap and trade system, how do you plan on convincing industries to switch technologies?
Wait a minute, I didn't hear. Give it to me again.
Without some type of cap and trade system, how do you plan on convincing industries to switch technologies?
Okay, with, okay, you all heard the question. If without cap and trade, how do you get them to, industries to switch technology? I'm not sure I understand cap and trade. I don't, I mean, I don't see how it's going to work. And I, every time I hear the story from those that want cap and trade, what comes off to me are taxes. And I am opposed to taxes. I'm a giner on taxes. I don't like them. And so, and I've seen some of these things come out of Congress, and the regulations are, the first thing is that you start studying them and figuring out how you can game them, how you can figure around them, how you can beat the system. And I just, I don't like that kind of stuff. And I, so, how do they switch technologies? I think you switch technologies here that you're going to go to, you're going to clean it up. And so, when you start getting cap and trade, gosh, I don't even want to get on the subject because I don't like the subject. So, I'm against it. I don't want cap and trade. Okay, all right. The next question.
The next question is from the middle.
Yes, sir. I became interested in the peak oil theory after having read James Cunstler's The Long Emergency, and I'm wondering if you can comment on that. But on a more practical level, Honda currently makes a Civic that runs on natural gas, which I'm sure you're aware of. Wouldn't mind buying one of those for a son headed off to college in a couple of years. But where are you going to fuel it at, since there's no place you can actually fuel it?
Okay, so, you're talking about the infrastructure for natural gas. Go back to Cunstler. Madeline and I went over to SMU and heard him one evening for two hours. And the guy makes a lot of sense, but he won't ever tell you when anything's going to happen. You know, he just says, you know, because we've done this several things, and he believes in peak oil. I believe in peak oil. I think you've peaked. And so, all we have to look forward to for oil is a decline curve, which will happen faster. Once you start declining, you can't replace, it's sort of like a treadmill, and they just turn the speed up on you. And so, it goes pretty fast, and decline comes quickly. The infrastructure will come, and we're not talking about, we're talking about infrastructure first, is not your car. You're talking about, what I'm after are the heavy users of diesel, which are the 18-wheelers. And around the world, there's 10 million vehicles on natural gas. 10 million. In the United States, it's 142,000. When you look at where the gas reserves are, it's interesting, because we have developed a great amount of gas in the last 10 years in this country. And it's in the basins, the shale basins. 10 years ago, the largest supply of natural gas untapped in the United States was already coastal plain, up at Dead Horse, Prudhoe Bay. That was a blow-down gas in the Prudhoe Bay oil field. But that was 39 trillion. Now, the largest gas field in the United States is the Barnett Shale, which is, you know, I can see it out my window if I stand on my chair. It's, you know, DFW Airport. They've drilled under DFW Airport. And it's in five counties, and it's a shale that you can fracture and actually get a lot of gas out of. Now, they have a big one in North Louisiana called Haynesville, and that looks like it's going to be bigger than the Barnett. Then you have Marcellus, which is up in Appalachia, and that covers down, all the way down from Pennsylvania, clear across West Virginia. And that's another big shale basin, which that looks like is going to be several times larger than the Barnett. You've got the Woodford in Oklahoma, and Fayetteville in Arkansas, and the Barnett again in West Texas. Then you have the Horn River up in British Columbia. So, we are overwhelmed with natural gas. You start, you know, when you get old, you start to think things that happen, you connect them back and start to think, the Lord has blessed us with this. And you do that, I think, because if you haven't before then, you start to think, I'm going to get there pretty quick, and I want to be sure that everybody understands who I think did this. So, this is, this is by divine intervention for us to show up with all this oil in this country with the predicament that we're in. We're sitting here behind the eight ball. We are in terrible shape as far as energy's concerned. And now, we're overwhelmed with what? The best resource we could have to solve the problem. It's cleaner, it's cheaper, it's abundant, and it's ours. To get out of our problem with our own resource this way is going to be beautiful, the way it works. See, 1 MCF of natural gas equals 8 gallons of gasoline. They're the same, they're the same BTU value, they're the same, they move the car the same distance, it's the same speed. 8 gallons of gasoline cost what, what would it be? 16, $20, is that a fair price? $20 for that. And the natural gas, the equivalent natural gas is $4. What a break. The cleaner, cheaper, abundant, is ours. You know, it's an incredible, it's 23% less NOx on natural gas than on gasoline. So, we're cleaner, much cleaner. Okay, another question.
We have time for two more questions.
Okay, am I picking?
A question way in the back.
That what?
A question way in the back here.
Okay.
My question is along the lines that you have a great strategic goal, and it's very honorable in the fact that it's using our resources to supply our energy. And essentially, you're a general providing us with direction, strategic direction, and what should we do? What plans do you have for refining that as some of your, the assumptions which your plan is based on change? So, let's say we get a battery, or the price points that you just mentioned change. What, how do you see that evolving over time?
Hold on a second. Last question.
Last part of the question. How do you see your strategic goal essentially evolving over time as some of the assumptions on which your current strategy is based change, and other things become important?
What are my assumptions? For this, as this unfolds?
No, no, no. How do you see your strategy changing if some of the assumptions on which your plan is based change?
Well, tell me how they're going to change. Help me.
For example, we come up with batteries that can power things. We have biodiesel, which we can get from a feedstock, which is more abundant than soybeans, or we find out how to make more biodiesel from soybeans, or other assumptions.
All right, we've got something better than what I'm talking about, is what you're saying. We show up with something, it's a better solution than mine. Great, do it. Just so it's American. The, and this is what Gore and I have talked about. Gore says, look, Boone, I want to go to the battery, I realize the battery doesn't move the 18-wheeler. Now, the battery does move the 18-wheeler in five years. What do we do? I said, if that works, do it. Natural gas is such a valuable resource for this country. We can use it in many places. So, you just, I mean, remain flexible, but understand what you're up against. Understand energy in America. See, what this is, I'm up here pitching this, but it's for, really, for my kids and grandkids and great-grandkids. I can make it to the finish line at 80. But the future generations cannot. The standard of living will be vastly different, be vastly different, unless you solve the energy problem. If you solve the energy problem, that's fine. Carry it out. But what I want to do when I leave KU today, I want to feel like I've offloaded some of my responsibility to you. To you. I'm getting tired of, you know, carrying the whole load. I'm really not, because I sign up people everywhere. So, you know, that's been a great relief to me, and it, you know, makes me feel good, because people connect to me. I go in a restaurant in San Francisco, waiter comes up to me and says, Mr. Pickens, I'm in your, and didn't even know me or anything, he said, I'm in your army, the Pickens Plan Army. He said, I said, well, that's good. I said, do you know anybody else who is? He said, all the waiters in here are. We're all signed up with you. Said, we get your emails every week. Before I left, a guy gets up at a table, four tables away, and he said, I didn't want to interrupt you while you were eating. I just wanted to tell you, I appreciate what you're doing for energy for America. I said, good deal, thanks. And so, but I can, anyplace you go, and it's because people are concerned, I know we're going to be, I know this is going to happen. There is no question that we are going to have an energy plan for America. But what has happened for 40 years, we've never been tasked to address the problem and the predicament that we found ourselves in, because we had cheap oil. Cheap oil has done it to us. And so, here, we now know, you know, that everybody can see the problem, and it's, and what's going to happen are, we're going to get on our own resources, the way it's going to work. Then, we're going to improve. You're going to find that turbine that's sitting out there in western Kansas, cranking out power out of it, that turbine won't even look the same way 10 years from now. There will be a turbine that's going to be twice as good as that. We're just barely scratching into the surface of this thing. By the time we get out 10 years, I promise you, this is, you know, we're going to be so proud of ourselves, all of us are, because we're going to be on our own resources around the world. Our credibility's going to go straight up, because they're going to wonder, where in the hell have you been? Why did you get so far into the problem? Nobody imports oil like we do. The closest one that does are the Chinese. We're importing 70%, the Chinese are about 50. But the Chinese are out there buying now. They're buying resources all over the world. We don't have a state-owned oil company. I don't, not sure I want one either. But we don't have one. But 70% of all the oil in the world is owned by state-owned oil companies, like Saudi Aramco, Perlevasa, Pemex. All of those are state-owned oil companies. They're the ones that have the oil. I'm amused when Congress calls in major oil companies, CEOs, and when the price of gasoline goes to $4, says, why didn't you raise the price of gasoline? Why did they raise the price of gasoline? Exxon, the largest of all, only owns 2.5% of the reserves in the world. 2.5%. They don't own anything. They have nothing to do with the price. The price is driven by the people that own the oil, is where it comes from. And I don't understand why Exxon doesn't come in and say, quit asking me stupid questions. I have nothing to do with raising the price of gasoline. Doesn't have anything to do with Exxon. And, but, they keep doing it. And what they try to do is they try to place blame. Find somebody we can blame for this. I can tell you who to blame for it. You can blame Congress for it, because we never had an energy plan. You can blame there if you want to. You can blame me. I understood it, I saw it. Why didn't I speak up 10 years ago or 20 years ago? I tried to. I didn't get anywhere. But if, you know, something could have been done. If you'd had the leadership, you would have solved the problem. Okay, one more question.
We have one last question. Andrew, I believe you have it back here in the center.
Is that a quick question? I'm originally from Texas, and in the past decade or so, the wind energy has expanded rapidly. Was that done through public, some form of stimulus or funding, or was it all private enterprise, such like out in Sweetwater?
The wind energy?
Yes.
Yeah, the wind energy, you know, it started to develop because we were starting to go clean. And so, these utilities and all were, were starting to look that they were going to have to have so much renewable in their portfolios. And that, I think, was it. And some of the states went with a plan, you know, 20% of the portfolio by 2020, and they had different ones. You're getting ready to get one of those now. I think it's going to be, help me, Sam, what's going?
20 by 20.
20, yeah, 20 by 20 is what's going to happen. And so, everybody started to feel it, and the heat was coming up, and so, they started to look at the wind at that point. And then, Congress gave a production tax credit that was valuable in kicking that off and making it go. But don't be afraid of it. Don't be afraid of it. And it's interesting, you're the first group I've talked to, in the last three months, that somebody didn't get up and say, Boone, you realize the wind doesn't blow all the time. Thank you, because I can tell the people at KU are smarter than the last 10 people. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pickens.
Thank you.